Y E V rebate rebate, which you know qualifies. What is a tax credit and how it works? Because the federal IRA clean vehicle credit, which is the new name for it of the E V tax credit. Uh, is a tax credit, it's not a rebate. We'll talk a few tips. Talk about some go forward actions that we might want to do as a result of what we see and talk about today. And then we'll have a conclusion with uh, a Q and A. So uh, with that said, uh, we'll definitely do a Q A, Q and A at the end, but I'll stop at a couple of key places and ask if there's questions on that point. All right. So uh, let's get going. So you're, you're letting people in, right?
I am.
Okay, all right then, uh, so uh, many of you have seen a chart like this before and uh, on the left hand side, you see the breakdown of greenhouse gas emissions. And you can see transportation is a major part of greenhouse gas emissions, twenty nine percent. With electricity generation about twenty five percent, industry twenty three agriculture, ten and residential and commercial buildings thirteen. This can be cut different ways depending on how you wanna, you know, treat electricity. But we'll just go with that for now, and I'll just mention that in many parts of the world, transportation is down closer to fifteen percent because they don't have many cars in many countries. But in the USA, you know, we've got a car for almost every man, woman and child. So, so with that said, uh, the breakdown of that twenty nine percent is on the right hand side. And you can see uh, fifty nine percent, almost sixty percent. If you don't, if you all don't mind, you know, please make sure you put yourself on uh, mute. Okay, so uh, of that twenty nine percent, fifty nine percent is light duty vehicles. That would be the vehicles that you're driving right now. Then twenty four percent would be medium and heavy duty vehicles. Medium, of course, would be uh, many uh, buses, school buses, transit buses. We do a lot of work with the uh, Chicago Transit Authority, uh, the C T A, uh, the pace bus as well as uh, the R T A. And some of those would be heavier vehicles, obviously, but most of them are electrifiable, if you will. Some of the very he- heavy things like aircraft, there are some E V aircraft, but not many, and that's gonna be difficult to do. The two percent, it's only ten percent, I mean, it's significant, but it's ten percent. And then rail is two percent, some of the best rail systems on the planet are electric uh, rails, which are not battery operated, they're usually overhead electric lines or uh, underneath the vehicle. And then five percent, so let's drill into this now and say, you know, where, where is the United States in, in how do we place with the rest of the world? So on a uh, on a registration basis, in other words, uh, uh, in Norway, you see they're the leader in terms of regis- new vehicle registrations. Eighty six percent of the vehicles to go on the road in Norway are uh, electric, uh, plug-in electric vehicles. Uh, Iceland's at seventy one percent. Uh, and, and this includes battery electric vehicles as well as plug-in uh, hybrids, you have to be able to plug it in and go a certain distance on electricity. So Iceland, for example, is down closer to fifty percent if you wanna talk about pure electric vehicles. And Norway's probably down around seventy percent. But Norway is definitely the leader, Iceland, Sweden, Denmark, Finland, pretty much the uh, um, Nordic countries, Netherlands, uh, then you break down to uh, Germany, Hong Kong, Switzerland, et cetera. And you see down at the bottom here, uh, California, not a country, but they're right behind China at fifteen percent, uh, at twelve point eight percent, China's at fifteen percent. And the United States is at four percent. Now, I believe this year we're running it closer to five point two percent or so. So you know, it is, it is increasing and it's actually increasing pretty quickly now in the United States. But we're way behind the rest of the, well, most of the rest of the world in developed countries. Now, if we wanna cut it a different way, the global total sales of electric vehicles is uh, in stock is about seventeen point five million vehicles on the road with sales of six point seven uh, million uh, in twenty twenty one. China's the absolute leader, leader in the all class segments, which would include trucks, it's uh, you know, heavy duty trucks. They're at uh, nine million and uh, regular passenger S U V type vehicles were down at seven point eight million. Europe as a whole is very, very large, right behind China. And then it breaks down to Germany, United States, et cetera, France, United Kingdom, et cetera. And of course, the Nordic countries which are leaving, leading on a per capita or a registration basis, there's much smaller countries. So the, the net uh, total of vehicles is, 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 you know, fairly low. But it, you know, it's most cars in the road there, I mean, they're E Vs. Now, it's interesting about this, so pay attention, you know, average person buys a car and keeps it for uh, eight years, but cars are typically on the road for twelve or thirteen years. So when you think about the car you have now and the car you might buy tomorrow, there's a good chance it's gonna be around for twelve years and we really don't want, i- if it's an ICE vehicle or internal combustion, but combustion engine vehicle. We really don't, you know, it's best for the health and the uh, emissions and climate change to not that, for that not to be an internal combustion engine diesel or gasoline powered vehicle. So when you look at the fossil fuel phase outs here, um, we're talking about Norway as a leader again. Uh, twenty twenty five, they expect to be no new uh, uh, gas, gasoline or diesel vehicles. Iceland is at twenty thirty, you can see there's a, quite a number of uh, countries that are at twenty thirty. Some, you know, like California and you know, is, is the best in the country. At twenty thirty five in the United States really hasn't made a commitment. Um, you know, Biden does have objectives of something like half the cars registered and going on the road, you know, he wants to have the uh, by twenty thirty be uh, electric vehicles. But uh, it's not specific as though when we're gonna go all in. And uh, so with that said, let's move on. Um, so what if people in, in the United States uh, think about this, you know, as far as buying them? Fourteen percent definitely would do it. Twenty two percent would seriously consider doing it, so total, if you add those together, about thirty six percent of the people, that's, that's pretty good news in terms of people really taking this thing seriously. And uh, there, another thirty five percent might consider this. If, and you know, add it together, we're up in the seventies type of the thing, which is a good thing. And twenty eight percent aren't gonna move anytime soon. And I have friends of mine in that category, they're not gonna move, but they'll move probably when they see that E Vs are better vehicles, in my view, but that's my view. So with that said, let's take a look at the why buy uh, an electric vehicle and then we'll get into the credits and so forth. So first of all, as you might expect, the, the elec- the E V emissions, zero tailpipe emissions from electric vehicles. Uh, but if we look at uh, on a, from the uh, E P A, they're saying about thirty to four percent. Uh, E Vs are about thirty to forty percent of an ICE vehicle. And you can see the breakdown as to why. It's really where they're charged. You know, if you're in Green Bay in Wisconsin or Naperville, Illinois, probably about seventy per- percent of the energy is coming from coal. Consequently, that pollutes a lot, so what we're doing is we're buying electricity that's emitting a lot of bad stuff. So um, also to make the battery, the way they're being made today around the world is not, it's not a great thing in some places of the world. And some of the things we'll talk about tonight is what we're gonna do about that, what Biden and the administration with the IRA is gonna do about that, to really take control of this and to not only do it better and healthier, but also uh, invest heavily in doing this right and doing it clean. So you can see over here, uh, an, an ICE vehicle, uh, gas vehicle, seventy four percent is just driving the car. You know, it's basically uh, vehicle being used, just driving it. And driving an electric vehicle is nothing. Seventeen percent would be feedstock or fuel, that'd be gasoline or diesel. And of course, with a uh, with a electric vehicle, sixty five percent would be the, the electricity itself. And then nine percent would be other manufacturing and end of life issues. And E Vs a little bit higher. And that's going down quickly, by the way, and then there's the battery, here, here it is, the battery. There's emissions to make the battery, so when you see, you, when you hear people that deny E Vs are uh, better for the environment, they're absolutely better for the environment, and I'm gonna show a chart later from uh, Illinois. Where, we're way better, we, you know, in Illinois, it's way better than this, this is a nationwide thing here. So E Vs are the way to go, and the beauty of this thing is, as time goes on and the grid gets cleaner and we learn how to do batteries better, existing E Vs on the road that have been on the road for two, three, five years will get cleaner, you know, as time goes on, as they're charged on more uh, grid uh, renewable energy. So with that said, let's move on. Number two is E V charging locations are, are challenged for a lot of people. Now, what a lot of people don't understand, so anybody in this uh, this call that is thinking about getting one, don't, doesn't have one yet, um, understand that most people charge at home, eighty five percent of people charge at home. So if you're able to charge at home, probably you're not gonna be as worried about charging stations being all over the place, unless you're on a trip and you wanna make sure that there's E, there's charging stations near, you know, highways and places like that. And there's a program called N E V I, it's uh, being put in, you know, in conjunction with the IRA in the, in the Illinois uh, E P A to make sure that uh, charging, a D C fast charging station will be no more than fifty miles apart on key highways. So that's a really good, really good thing. All right, with that said, um, oh, I should say, so if we zoom in on the country, it looks great, of course, let's zoom in on Chicago, this is how it looks. And the orange ones are the super fast ones, okay, and the green ones are slower. And then in the suburbs, for example, Naperville's where I live right here, so this is what it looks like. So again, if you charge at home, you probably don't go to any of these things ever, okay? Unless you happen to be at a Kohl's department store and there's two charges outside it and nobody's using it, so you go in and plug in and you pick up twenty five miles, equivalent of a gallon of gas, July you're shopping. So you might not need it, but you might do it, it's kind of a benefit of shopping in places like that, or to Walmart or at an Amazon Fresh location. So with that said, let's move on to battery recycling, which is an issue, so there are ten companies, ten very large companies doing this. Redwood Materials is one of, like, their number eleven, I think. And that's a, um, one of the people that left uh, Tesla, uh, started up that company. And what they're trying to do is uh, recycle the batteries, so it's back to the battery emissions to make them. Well, part of the IRA that we'll talk about in a bit is been able to do things uh, made from recycled batteries, okay? That's a key thing, rather than new material every time. And so that's important uh, to do recycling, it's part of the raw material uh, tax credit. And also they're being uh, redeployed uh, batteries that have been like from old Nissan Leafs from back in twenty twenty ten. While they, you know, trashed the car because it's too old and they take the battery out and they, they can be used in the grid as backup. So when the sun goes down from, when the wind isn't blowing, the sun goes down, the uh, grid battery systems taken, it take into effect, and that's one of the places that they're uh, being uh, deployed. And also we wanna look at uh, E V battery uh, longevity. So some people worry about this, but the average person keeps their car eight years, so there's a good chance if you buy an E V, a new one, it's gonna have an eight-year hundred thousand dollar, hundred thousand mile warranty on the battery alone. And Hyundai and Kia's ten years. Uh, so there's a good chance that when you get rid of the car, the battery will still be under warranty. So people shouldn't be as worried about the battery. And in fact, some of the older ones that have been on the road like uh, Nissan Leafs, um, that, those cars are going great guns, and in fact, Redwood Materials is having a heck of a time cranking up because there's not enough old E Vs, effective E V batteries, you know, to keep them going. That'll change, of course, it's more, you know, cars go on the road, but anyway, it is what it is. And then the range itself, you know, most people drive only forty miles a day and, and a, you know, heavy day would be seventy miles. So what's happening is E Vs are now getting a similar range as ICE part, uh, gas powered uh, vehicles, ICE vehicles, between two and four hundred, never buy an E V that doesn't have at least two hundred and twenty mile range nowadays. So really, they're up in like a, like a gas pi- powered car, and the beauty of this is most people go ahead, you don't have to, but a lot of, a lot of E V drivers go ahead and just plug it in every night like their cellphone, and in the morning they have full range, so they don't really worry about finding a, a gas station or a charging station. So that's a really good thing, because they charge at home, they start each day full and you know, maybe charges for two or three hours at home overnight while you're sleeping, so that's how it goes. Now, charging speed has always been uh, an issue, because let's face it, you can't fill up an E V as fast as you can a gas powered car. So, but about eighty five percent of the people charge at home and they charge overnight, so they don't really care. And they don't really care how long it takes. In fact, most people I know don't even know how long it takes, they just plug it in and by morning they're fine. But the, the thing is, it's probably two or three hours unless you really drove a lot of miles and plugged in, then it might take all night. But in public, it could be as fast as two mi- two hundred miles in eighteen minutes. I have a Hyundai Ioniq five and that thing charges, you know, ti- from ten percent to eighty percent in eighteen minutes, that, that's how capable it is. Now, I have an older Chevy, though, it doesn't, isn't fast like that, so really it depends on the car and it also depends on the charging station. But some of these E Vs nowadays can charge twenty miles in a minute, okay? So you can see if you need sixty miles to get home, you know, you, you plug in for three minutes and you're up and running, you're back on the road. So that's kind of the state of the affairs. And then we'll talk about E V costs and that'll get us into the rebates and things, where uh, the cost is uh, gonna, according to Bloomberg, will be on parity with gas vehicles in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, the, the, now with, with inflation, you know, all cars are getting more expensive. So in proportion to, to uh, gas powered cars, between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, most sedans and S U Vs will be pretty much the cost will be the same and then E V costs will go down dramatically below gas cars. And it will kill off the gas cars because E Vs only have like two hundred twenty parts in the drive system compared to two thousand parts in, in a gasoline powered vehicle. So the cost is gonna be a lot less to make an E V. What's keeping the cost up high now is the cost of the battery. The battery is expensive, now that's dropping like a rock too. And some of the things in the IRA are gonna really ramp this up and, and get the cost down. So this uh, last bullet leads us into the uh, cost issue. But as we look at it, we wanna look at what's, what's out there, I wanted to make sure you all had a list. There are forty one E Vs, probably more than that, but I'm, I'm not counting plug-in hybrids, and this, this pure E Vs here, uh, battery electrics, forty one of them uh, uh, on, as of August fifteenth, just recently. And you can see that twenty four are above forty six thousand, which is the average price of a car. And seventeen of them are below forty six thousand, okay? So you can see there's quite a good selection below forty six thousand and then even more though, above forty six thousand. So when you hear that E Vs in the media, the average price of an E V is sixty five thousand, it's because of the Tesla Model X at a hundred and twenty thousand each. It's because of the G M C Hummer or somebody's high-end vehicles that distort the average, which is understandable, okay? But that doesn't mean you can't go out, buy a Chevy Bolt or a Nissan Leaf at a very reasonable twenty six, twenty seven thousand dollars today. Okay. There's, there's your list, so let's get into Illinois. Illinois has a rebate program. And a rebate gives you cash, so if you, if you uh, meet the requirements of the Illinois rebate, they'll send you a check. And I'll talk about the amount in just a second. Here are the rules, it's a four thousand dollar rebate. So just, just remember this, this, this thing right over here. Uh, Chevy Bolt, uh, you know, twenty six, five ninety five, Nissan Leaf twenty seven, or any, any of these. And think about four thousand off, now you start to see how an E V can be really pretty cost effective to purchase, let alone the fact that it only costs two or three cents a mile to drive it compared to fifteen, sixteen cents for a gasoline powered vehicle. Or half the maintenance on an E V compared to a gasoline vehicle. So this helps to get the price down and uh, it's fifteen hundred dollars for all electric motorcycle. Hybrids, plug-in hybrids and off-road vehicles, not allowed, it's gotta be a full-up E V. And low income by, income buyers are prioritized. And we've had, I think it's fifteen hundred people since July, um, applied for this. And I believe twelve hundred have been awarded already, most of them have not been low income people. But they, they put them to the, the front of the list, low income people, and I believe that is, is eighty percent of the average uh, um, income of an Illinois resident, I think that's, that's the rules on that, so whatever that is. If you, if they see your, they'll put you ahead of the, the, the class. And then when they've taken care of those people, they'll pay, pay four thousand dollars to the rest of the people. Now, this program was three months at a time and they've just re-upped it for November first, another batch for uh, three more months. So how do you apply? Well, eligibility, I mean. You must apply within ninety days of the purchase. You must reside in Illinois and purchase it in Illinois. It's gotta be purchased from a dealer. And that dealer could be Carvana or places like that, but it's gotta be Illinois registered dealer, okay? Uh, rented or leased vehicles uh, do not qualify. You gotta buy it, vehicles cannot be subject to a previous in Illinois E V rebate. Uh, probably very few of those cars are on the road. But the old rebate Illinois, believe it or not, had, I got one in twen- in twenty twelve. I got seventy five hundred dollars for my Chevy Bolt way back then. And uh, so if that Bolt is still around, that Bolt's not, not gonna qualify. If somebody gets that as a used car, it's not gonna qualify, and you can check with the Secretary of State on that to find out if it qualifies, and you, you should do that. But there probably isn't very many of those still on the road. The purchase, uh, let's see, the rebate cannot exceed the purchase price of the vehicle. Let's see, the purchase purchaser must retain uh, ownerships for twelve consecutive months after the purchase date. And the documentation required is invoice, proof of purchase, vehicle registration, I R S W nine and W eight forms. So you can see it's pretty straightforward on Illinois. Any question on Illinois before we move on? If not, put it in the chat, if you can think of it as we go forward, yeah, go ahead, Catherine.
You said that it's extended for three additional months. And is that starting November first then? Or I, I forget if it ended October first or November first.
I'm not sure if the July through now has closed. But I know they decided to re-up it for November first. I have a feeling that you might still be able to get in, but I would check with the Illinois Secretary of State on that, their office, make sure or hold off until November.
And any idea if they will keep re-upping it?
Well, one of the concerns, I've been on some teams along with Pam, uh, Pam Tate, uh, this concern about the budget, how much money is allocated for this particular program, cuz it's not a tax credit. It is a rebate, they're paying you, you know, to be in this thing. And so there's some question as to whether um, there'll be enough money, but really, I think we've only had fifteen hundred cars, so if you do the math, I think we're doing pretty good on money so far.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
My question. Three months at a time, I think it's three months at a time, yes, Rob.
I've got a question, um. You are driving I onic, an Ioniq five, which is the car I really wanna get, but I know that it and Kona's cannot be bought in Illinois. So, does this apply to this?
They, they can, I'll be talking about them, you can't get the federal tax credit, but you can get the uh, Illinois credit. Yeah, absolutely, these are the rules for Illinois, any car is available here. They're not restricting it based on where the car was made or anything. The federal government is doing it, but we'll get to that next. Uh, Robin, you had a question?
Yes, um, my question is about the um, the, you know, isn't there still the rule of if a manufacturer has already met their limit that they've sold of these cars that they, those cars can't qualify?
No, that's a federal rule. And that, we'll be talking about that next.
Okay, thanks.
Jim Proctor, you got a question?
What did you say qualifies as low income? What was that metric?
Well, you can go to the website uh, from Illinois, uh, but uh, I think it's eighty percent of the average Illinois taxpayer.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what that is, and I can't seem to find that out, but we can look into that if you like, but I think it's easy to go to their website yourself and see what the rules are, but if, what I saw earlier today is eighty percent of that.
Right, we can do that, thank you very much.
Yes, and by the way, that only says, that only gets you ahead of the line, it doesn't mean you won't get it.
Understood, okay.
I looked at the fifteen hundred people or so, and most of those people are not low income.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, so let's move on to the, Robin, you can put your hand down. Uh-huh. Let's move on to the more complicated issue, for, let's talk about the federal tax credit. Now, the federal tax credit is not a tax deduction. A deduction goes off your top wages. It allows you to deduct a certain amount of money, because you know, you're doing something. A tax credit comes off the bottom, whatever your tax liability is, it comes off the bun- bottom, and I'm gonna explain that right now. So if you look at this three people, person one who does not have an E V, person two just bought an E V, and person three that just bought an E V. A person one and person two both make a hundred thousand a year. Person three, sixty thousand. Person one and person two both got, earned six thousand dollars in interest, nice. Person three only got six thousand. Let's make things simple and ignore these. So the adjusted gross income is a hundred and six thousand dollars for these two and sixty six thousand for the third person. All right, now let's look at deductions. Charitable deductions, boy, these people are giving good money to charity, especially for their income, ten percent. Chartered, ten thousand dollars, these first two, and only five thousand dollars for this person three. And again, I'm making these numbers up, but they should be accurate in terms of how the math works here. And so the total itemized deduction would be ten thousand dollars for these two guys and five thousand for this person number three. Now, with that, each, the three of them are taking the standard deduction on their income taxes. Standard deduction for person one and two is twenty thousand dollars. Person three, they made less money, the standard deduction is fifteen percent. So the total deductions from the adjusted gross income is twenty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand in fifteen. So how does this work out? Now this, you can look at this, you can look at your last filings with the I R S, when you filed your taxes last year and see these things for yourself. But, so the taxable income here is eighty six thousand dollars because this guy made a hundred and six. He took the standard deduction of twenty thousand, which is eighty six thousand, so these two guys are the same. And this one's fifty one. The total tax, if he paid ten percent, and of course, that depends on the person, how much money they made, what kind of other deductions they had, we kept, keeping it simple here. They paid eight thousand six hundred in taxes for the entire year in both cases, and this guy paid five thousand one hundred. The tax credit for the first guy, he didn't buy an E V, he got nothing. Now, there are other things that could qualify, like solar power could qualify you for a tax credit. But I'm not, I don't wanna complicate it here, we're just talking about E Vs. So the first guy didn't get any deduction of, of that tax. He has to pay a six thou- yeah, eight, six, eight, sorry, eight thousand six hundred. The second guy bought an E V, whoa. He got a seventy five hundred dollar tax credit, therefore, his total tax due for the entire year, he made a hundred and six thousand dollars, he only has to pay one thousand one hundred for the whole year, it's wonderful. The second guy, wait a minute, what's up with that? His tax credit is fifty one hundred. You can't claim more than the taxes you pay. So therefore, even if he qualified with a car that given seventy five hundred, he could only, he'll, he claimed a seventy five hundred, but they'll only give you fifty one hundred, because you can't make money on the, the government. His total tax for the whole year made sixty six thousand dollars, he paid no taxes. Is everybody clear on this? Okay. If this were a deduction, it wouldn't be as good, and John Cavallounis and I talked about whether to show that, I just don't wanna complicate things here by showing it. But this, this tax credit is, is the best. It's better than a tax deduction. All right. So that's how it works. Now, if you look in the extreme right side, the tax due has nothing to do with getting a refund. A refund has everything to do with how much you paid from your employer, as the, how much they took out in taxes every time you got a paycheck. And at the end of the year, based on the tax due and how much they collected from you, you either get a refund or you have to send them a check. You're more likely to get a refund if you get a tax credit like this guy. But if he, if, you, you know, he, he, he's, he's gonna have to pay at least eleven hundred. He may get a larger refund, but the refund is second to this, okay? I hope that's clear to everybody. And again, if, once I send these slides to you, you think about this, whatever you do, talk to your tax person if you like, or, you know, email me or whatever, I'd be glad to help, so let's move ahead. So what happened with the new IRA fax, uh, federal tax credit? The old one ran for about a dozen years, it was simple, as I said. Excuse me, and I got three cars here. The, the Ioniq five, which Patty mentioned that I have, they started thirty nine nine. The, the IONIQ five, which Patty mentioned that I have, they started thirty-nine nine. Is qualification issues with that in the federal tax. It's not made here, and I'll get into that in just a minute. The Ford Mustang. More expensive. They're made in Mexico. They qualify. Because it's North America, we'll talk about that. The Chevy Bolt twenty-seven-two. Doesn't qualify until January first of twenty-twenty-three. So pretty soon they'll qualify. And the reason is, is because. Some things are leftovers from the old tax credit. It affects General Motors and Tesla. But we'll look at that now. But before we look at that in detail, let's take the easy thing, which is the used EV tax credit, which never existed. So imagine the four thousand dollars potentially from Illinois. Or thirty percent of, or four thousand dollars. Uh, or thirty percent, you know, for the Illinois rule that I told you about earlier. So this one here. It starts on one, one twenty-three. It didn't start when they signed the law into effect on, on August sixteenth. It, it, uh, it starts on one, one twenty-three. And you file your tax credit, you, you file for this sometime after the beginning of the year when you do your taxes. So. What is it? Vehicle must be two years old, price must be under twenty-five thousand, must be sold by a dealer. Your income can't be higher than seventy-five thousand for a standard filer. Hundred and twelve thousand five hundred for head of household. Or a hundred and fifty thousand for a joint or surviving spouse. So potentially you might have eight thousand dollars now. Between Illinois and this. And. The amount is, of this is four thousand dollars. Or thirty percent of the price of the vehicle, whichever is less. Any question on this? Okay, it's pretty straightforward.
This is talking about the federal tax credit now.
Yes.
Cause I was, you mentioned Illinois, and I thought first you were going with rebates, but this is still the tax credit from the federal.
So Illinois, you could potentially get four thousand dollars in a check from them if you qualify. With this one, you have to file your taxes to get the money from the federal government. But together, this could be eight thousand dollars, right? I should have said federal used EV tax credit at the top, I didn't. That's a good point. So Illinois has nothing to do with that. You can get both. So a lot of people don't understand that. You want, you wanna buy that uh. Uh, that Chevy for, or the Nissan for twenty-seven thousand dollars? Go for it, you get four thousand dollars off from Illinois right off the bat. But that Nissan might, might get you, a used one might get you another four thousand dollars if it's a used one. Okay, John, go ahead.
Just to clarify, Tom, so from Illinois for a used EV, you can get four grand? I didn't, I wasn't thinking that they were that generous with used.
Four thousand.
I thought the EV or the Illinois one had to be new vehicles only.
I think you're right, I apologize. Yeah, it looks like that. Yeah, it could be motorcycles or new, you're right. So if we go back to this. Used uh, is uh, you'll only get it from the federal government, four thousand dollars for the used one. Okay. New vehicle. The rules are different when the IRA was signed into law on August sixteenth. And then, and the rules, the transition rules go to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. On, at the start of the new year, a new set of rules goes into effect. Here are the rules, if you wanna buy a car within the next couple of months, here are the rules. First, the car must be built in North America. Mexico's fine, Canada's fine, USA's fine, but that Hyundai IONIQ. That I got the tax credit before this went into effect. Now, if you buy one, you don't get it. Because it's made in South Korea. And I'll show you a list of cars in a minute, okay? Applies to new purchased financed or leased vehicles. It still includes battery electric vehicles and fuel cell hydrogen vehicles. Still includes plug-in hybrids. But the hybrid, the plug-in hybrid, not a hybrid, a plug-in hybrid. Has to have a battery of at least seven kilowatt hours. So in other words, it's gotta be a plug-in hybrid that go about fifty miles before it shifts to a gasoline powered vehicle. The old sales limit that disqualified Tesla and GM still applies between now and the end of December. Two and three wheel, wheel vehicles are not eligible. And the tax credit seventy-five hundred. So now you say, if, if you qualify, do this right, you could get four thousand from the state of Illinois. And another seven thousand five hundred on top of that. If you, if you meet these qualifications. But that's pretty good. Now you have to, you have to look at this, some additional rules go into effect, but this is the situation. Okay, part one, are we okay in part one? What are they trying to do? They wanna. Biden in the Congress wants to make sure that going forward. Vehicles are built in North America somewhere. USA, Canada, Mexico's fine, but if they're built in North Korea, I mean, South Korea, no, no can do anymore. Hyundai's really upset about this. And in fact, there's, there's some questions that the World Trade Organization is gonna really make a big deal out of this. Potentially bring suit against the United States. But that's a separate issue.
But the leased vehicle. So I thought leased and rented were not, could, were not a, a, applicable. I thought you couldn't, it has to be. Oh, oh, that's the, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, this is improved.
Yep, got it.
New one, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Part two of this. This starts on January first of twenty-three. And goes out to beautiful, really nice, twenty thirty-two. Really nice. But some of these rules are a little upsetting. And the question is, what is climate reality gonna do? To, pardon my French, raise a little hell on some of these things potentially, and the team has to discuss, discuss that, which I'll bring up in a, in a little bit. First of all. This, the disqualifying rule against Tesla and GM is lifted on January first. So if you're thinking about a Chevy Bolt for twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand. You buy that January first, if you can get your hands on one. It qualifies. All right, income cap, and I'll show you the cars in a bit. Income caps, hundred and fifty thousand single filers, two twenty-five head of household, three hundred thousand for a joint filing or surviving spouse. No part of the supply chain can come from foreign entities of concern. And that would be China. Or Russia. And there could be other countries, but those, those guys stick out. There's some rules at first. Well, first of all, the battery components are hundred percent banned starting in twenty-twenty-four. So not right away, this is a phase in here. Battery material, minerals such as lithium and cobalt and all of that kinda stuff. Hundred percent banned started in twenty-twenty-five. China makes half, half the lithium ba- lithium batteries and stuff in the world right now. So there's a little, uh, little phase in there on that. But it's still, you know, fairly strict. The amount is a seventy-five hundred dollar tax credit. However, it's cut into. And you have to meet, if you only meet one of these, you only get half the tax credit. So critical battery materials such as lithium, graphite, nickel and cobalt. If you forget all these things, by the way, your dealer will tell you. Cause they'll know all about this. They probably already do. But anyway. Uh, requires uh, critical battery materials like lithium, graphite, nickel and cobalt come from some of the worst places on this planet. Requires a percentage of these materials, minerals extracted and processed within the US or, or a free trade partner. That we have, which is many countries around the world. Fifty percent of it's gotta be starting next year, increasing to a hundred percent in twenty-twenty-nine. The other half is thirty-seven fifty, which is the critical battery components. This is part of a make America rule. It says you're gonna make the battery in North America forty percent in twenty-twenty-three. Increase in eighty percent in twenty-twenty-seven. So for example, Tesla and GM Chevrolet, they make the batteries here. LG makes them here, so that's fine. But then you have to look at the com- the materials, or at least the manufacturers have to, to make sure as much of that comes from the USA. Excuse me, in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. Uh, you, you get the tax credit by filing your taxes. And then you get credit on your, possibly on a refund or against your taxes. The good news is on January one, one, twenty-twenty-four, you'll get it right at the dealer. So when you buy the car. The MSRP, it'll back off from that, you'll, and you'll get it as, as a discount right out, right away. Any question on this slide? You can, there's websites that you can go to to enter the VIN number and it'll tell you what, you know, qualifies.
Tom, I, I don't understand that dealer transfer credit thing, because if you have to do your tax filing. In order to know what tax credit you.
Yeah, so the way, yeah, the way it works is uh. You tell, you can tell the dealer. Uh, you can get credit for seventy-five hundred, but when you file your taxes, if you don't. Pay at least seventy-five hundred in taxes, the IRS will bill you for the difference. They'll get you. So you should know when you buy the car, what you pay in taxes. Now, to be honest with you, if you make sixty, seventy, eighty, hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, you're probably paying this easy. Okay? But if you not, if you don't make a lot of money. It's very possible you ought to pay attention to your tax filings in your income. Maybe talk to whoever you file taxes with about this and only claim that amount. Because they'll, they'll come back and say, oh, you owe. Okay? The good news is you get it right up front, that's the good news. Versus filing later and being out the money until you get the filing. Any other questions? On this?
Well, the bad news is that low income people who don't have very much tax wouldn't get much, wouldn't get much of a rebate or. A credit, shouldn't say rebate, they wouldn't get much tax credit.
Yeah.
If they're only paying, say, two thousand dollars a year, then they won't. It won't be near as beneficial for them as it would be for rich people, as, as you're pointing out.
You, you'll get the two thousand back, you'll pay no taxes, but you won't get the full benefit, that's correct. But still, two thousand dollars on top of four thousand from Illinois could be a total of six. Not starting to not be too bad, especially if you buy a lower, lower price EV. I mean, the thing that's good, then a, a new EV coming out from Chevy, the Equinox EV is gonna be thirty thousand dollars. But they've already got the bolt down to, I think, twenty-seven. And Nissan's got uh. Low price, yes, Walter?
Yeah, I know that under the older federal tax rebate, uh, a credit rather. That it had to be taken in the current tax year and could not be carried over. Is that still the same?
I'm not sure about that. I'll check carryover. I believe it's gonna be the same.
Okay.
But I'll check. All right, let's, let's uh, round this out in the next fifteen minutes. What about charges? So first of all, the first thing to do is to check with your city to see if they give you money. Or your electric company, if they give you money or credits. For example, the city of Naperville give you seven hundred dollars. To buy um. A charger and have it installed. Now, it might cost a thousand to have that done. But they'll give you seven hundred. But the federal, the federal government, Illinois won't give you anything. Now, some electric companies also give you money, but you'd have to check that out. So this is good in that it, it extends to twenty thirty-two. For individuals in residential use. Also, there's commercial uses, but there's different rules for that that I'll talk about. Bidirectional charging is allowed. So if you buy a piece of equipment that's take cost uh, three or four hundred dollars to plug into your car. So that if you lost power in your home, you can plug your home into your car. My car can do that. I can take a tax write-off on that. Two and three wheeled charging equipment's allowed, but not the two or three wheeled. Motorcycle. Now Harley-Davidson's very upset about this. We'll see how this plays out, but the charger, you can, you're good to go on the charger. The amount. Individuals and businesses would be for a regular charge thirty percent or up to a thousand dollars. Of the cost for equipment and inst- and installation. That usually will cover the cost unless you have a very old house with a very uh. Like a hundred amp service instead of the newer houses that have two hundred amp services, which could cost more money. But that works for a lot of people, commercial up to a hundred thousand dollars of cost of equipment. Uh, and certain rules uh. Occur on that. So for example, the NEVI uh, program. Between Illinois EPA and the federal government. They have rules as to where the chargers must go near highways and things like that, how many feet or. Et cetera, from the highway, the charges are, how much they apply. Also, there's rules to put them in uh, low income places, low income areas. So there's a place in the, for example, in the, if you use a software product called Plug Share, you can look in the city of Chicago and on the south side. These areas that really need chargers really bad. They'll be prioritized. Okay. I put this up before, I'm putting it up again before I show you the cars that qualify now. Because forty-one EVs, not counting plug-in hybrids, which would add maybe fifteen more. But forty-one EVs on August fifteenth. All of them qualified except for the starred ones. Chevrolet and Tesla, basically, a GM and Tesla. Because we were under the old rule on August fifteenth. All of these cars, so if you spent a hundred and twenty thousand for this Tesla Model X, you get seventy-five hundred. If you spent uh. Twenty-seven thousand for this Nissan Leaf. You get seventy-five hundred. You, you get, you get the car for nineteen thousand dollars. But what happened? On August sixteenth, when the IRA was signed by Biden, this happened. Between eight sixteen, when he signed that bill. In twelve thirty-one, the rules that I taught you, the part one rules are in effect. These. Um, was it seven? Vehicles absolutely appear to apply. Ford Mustang made in Mexico. Ford E Transit, I think made in Chicago, I'm sorry, Detroit. Nissan Leaf, I think it's Tennessee or Kentucky. The lucid, lucid air in the Rivian, two Rivians, very expensive vehicles. They qualify because they're under the transition, the old rules for a little bit between these states. Now, what happens on the first of the year? The same four cars qualify up here. But all of these get added. So for example, Volkswagen is now producing one of the models of an ID four. Right here in the United States. That'll qualify, it's made right here. But some ID fours that are made in Germany won't qualify. The Chevy Bolts will qualify, Tesla Model Three, the base model. As long as it's under fifty-five thousand, right? Cause it's a sedan. It's gonna qualify. But some of the higher priced ones will, if it's over fifty-five thousand, won't qualify. The Tesla Model Y is an SUV, so up to eighty thousand, that's gonna qualify. And the Cadillac Lyric, which is a Cadillac EV SUV. That thing, I think, of sixty-five thousand, that's gonna qualify. And then finally over here, all of these vehicles that used to qualify on August fifteenth, none of them qualify now. Why? Well, the first column is they're disqualified, the price is okay. The Hyundai IONIQ five starts at thirty-eight thousand and goes up from there. It qualifies on price. But none of these cars are made in the United States, the Toyota, the Toyota, the Volvo, the Polestar. In fact, the Polestar two is made in China, it will never qualify, no matter what happens, because it's one of those countries, right? And then these, they're okay, they've been made in the United States, but they're wicked expensive, they're a hundred thousand, ninety thousand dollar vehicles, right? They'll never qualify. Now, some of these, like Hyundai, for example, these two vehicles here. Actually, this Kia two, these two Kias and these Hyundai's. Hyundai's building two plants in the United States right now, one in Alabama and one in Georgia. However, it's not gonna produce vehicles until twenty twenty-four. They're out. And they're upset. Now, one of the things climate reality is talking about is really, they should be given, if they're building ten billion dollars. In the United States, they should be given a waiver for a year. That's something that we can talk about in the chapter about whether or not it's some. That's something that we can talk about in the chapter about whether or not it's something we ought to try and push for. But the losses, no can do unless it's some kind of waiver. Any questions on this slide? We're almost at the end.
Tom, isn't that 1123 on the right?
Yes, I apologize. Ah, my God, yeah, you got me.
Because you're being sequential to 1231 and then it's 23, right?
Yeah. So I'll fix that. 1123. Thanks for catching that, John. Anything else?
So so, Tom, just just to understand, as of 1123, the ones over here, Lucid, Rivian, the two Rivians will not qualify.
Too expensive.
Okay.
And Rivian's very upset about this. Okay, there's one other rule, the battery composition and minerals rule that I talked about before. That goes into effect, but it's a phase in 40% on this day, you know, 50% et cetera. There's some question as to whether, how that's going to affect cars that do qualify. So, okay, on price, okay, made in the United States. But is the Nissan Leaf, for example, how is the mineral contribution, et cetera, for the Nissan Leaf? I have a feeling these guys are going to qualify. I know the Chevy's really well. We have a, we have a bolt. The Chevys are made by, you know, here, and I think the 40% limit, they'll probably squeak by. But I'm not positive on some of them. Like, I'm not positive on the F-150 Lightning. Yes, Chris?
Yeah, would these disqualified vehicles qualify for a rebate as used, or are they still disqualified?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As used, they will?
Oh, yeah, yes.
That's good to know.
In fact, there's almost no rules, even the Polestar will qualify, because there's no, almost no rules for the used one.
My husband has his eye on one of those.
Oh, used, go used, yeah. All right, so let's, let's bring this to, so here's some tips. Confirm eligible vehicles with the manufacturer. And in fact, there's a website that I'm going to make sure to add to this that you can type in the VIN number of a car you may be considering, and they'll, and the, and the government will tell you. Manufacturers are racing to meet these requirements. So the good news is a lot of them will be trying to get under the MSRP. Where before there was no incentive, now you have to get under the MSRP. So cars underneath, let's say, the $55,000 rule for Sudan, okay? Well, that's pretty, I think it's pretty generous, and 80,000 for an SUV, I think it's pretty generous, but you know, manufacturers that are on that extreme right side back here, you know, these guys here. They're going to want to get in, you know, get in the game, because they're immediately $7,500 disadvantage compared to the competitors immediately. Configure your vehicle to fall under the MSRP caps. So for example, if you buy a Tesla rear-wheel drive base model, I think it's 47,000, you're good to go. But if you wanted the all-wheel drive one, if that thing is 56,000, you're out. If it's 54,000, you're in. So you have to watch that MSRP thing. Plan your charger installation now. See your electrician. Because if you get the charger now, because sometime next year, you're going to have an EV, get that charger now. Not a, there's not a lot of technological changes in chargers. They're a commodity like a toaster, frankly. Take a look at that, because if you do it now, you can claim it on your taxes right away, first first part of the year, and get the benefit of that $1,000, and it's behind you. But if you do it next year, about the time you get the EV, you have to wait a year to get that money. So consider getting the charger now. We can give you advice on which ones. Get your charger and have it installed, as I mentioned. Helpful vehicle information, this PlugStar.com, I, they did, they do a fantastic job in my view. You can compare EVs, you can plug in, you can plug in all kinds of information, you can compare vehicles, what's the difference between this one and this one? It's just excellent stuff. So with that said, we're just about out of time. So the actions might be for the EV team and anybody who wants to join us would be, how do we feel about blue and gray hydrogen, where a fuel cell electric vehicle totally qualifies? And yet, there's almost no hydrogen today being produced, it's green hydrogen. Should we, should we talk about that? And should we try to do something about that? Because it doesn't seem right. Short-term waivers for automakers that are building and manufacturing in the United States like Hyundai. Should we push Buttigieg for waivers? Short-term waivers for relaxation of battery mineral rules by one year can make all the difference in the world in my view. Because we have crimped availability of EVs. They're still out there, but you just won't get the tax credit, which hurts. And then we need to expedite renewable energy, wind, and especially solar. If you look at this chart, this is a typical, this is a state of Illinois right now. Because nuclear is 57%, an all-electric vehicle has this much emissions, about 2,500 pounds of CO2 per year. And a gasoline power is up here. The chart I showed earlier was the United States, which means it's a little bit higher in the US because of this nuclear. Our wind power is 10%, our solar power is infinitesimal. That's going to change. So with climate reality, this week, we're launching a solar team to get on top of this for community solar and rooftop solar. Okay. And then finally, in conclusion, you know, these cars are really quiet, they perform well, and they're fun to drive. Everybody I know that has one just can't believe they didn't do it sooner. They help families stay environmentally safe in terms of greenhouse gases, gases. They don't pollute the air. They're healthy air. They help reduce the chance of suffering from gas prices that go through the roof because of all kinds of bad things happening in the world, like Russia, et cetera. And they help families because once you make the investment and you defer that investment with tax credits or rebates or tax credits, you get, you get the MSRP down, if you do it right. Then from that point forward, you'll pay 2 to 3 cents a mile to drive it versus 15 to 16%, which means you're saving somewhere between 1 and $2,000 every year by driving the car. You just have to remember that the purchase might be a little higher, but your budget impact is lower because of you won't be paying for all that expensive gas. So that's about it. Any questions? Put your name and email in the chat. And I'll get you the slides. Yes, Laura? I guess she doesn't have a question. Anybody else?
Yeah, Tom, this is Don. I, this may be off subject, but what is the impact of solid-state batteries that are coming going to do to to all of this?
Yeah, you still need many of the same things like lithium and so forth, but it's going to be able to be charged quicker, et cetera. So it's important that we continue the R and D on batteries to eventually go solid-state, but I think it's, I think it's years out. I mean, they're piloting things, you know, they're testing things, but it's really nowhere yet. If you look at the investments in current technology, it's very heavy. And it's, it's not going to change it, you know, if you want to invest in lithium, that's probably not going to change anytime soon. But eventually it might. So it's hard, it's really hard to say.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I, I have two questions. My first question is, I, it seems like you said that the Illinois credit is just for new cars, but I remember one of the criteria statements that was made is the car can't have gotten a rebate before. So that implies that it's used cars.
Yeah, you know, I'm going to check that out and clarify. I thought it was new and used, but I didn't see that on my list, so I might have made a mistake. I will clarify that.
Okay, and the second question I have is that my, I have a Mitsubishi Outlander PHEV and the manufacturing information said I should avoid fast chargers. And I don't know if you have any experience or know anything about that, but it's like it's not good for the battery.
Yeah, the only thing is about fast chargers is because they put a lot of stress on the battery, you probably don't want to do that every day. So most people charge at home and only charge on fast chargers when they're on like vacation or going on a trip. And one of the reasons, one of the ways to be safe about this is most fast chargers will stop your charge at 80% state of charge. They just stop and shut you off, because they know that if you go beyond 80% of a charge, it stresses the battery. You can then reinitialize it and go all the way to 100%, but what happens is all these chargers really slow down at 80%. So to protect the battery. So it's not, it's not a big fearful thing, I'll be honest with you. The way, the way it works, but charging every single day on a DC fast charger, yeah, what's going to happen is the battery is going to lose range over time. It's going to continue to work, you know, just if you got 250 miles, you know, over time, it might only hit you 230 or something.
Quick question, Tom?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Someone put in the chat, they purchased one of the Volkswagen products. And when they got it all-wheel drive, it kicked the price up $50,000. So living in Chicago, that will be something that we'd be very curious about. So I guess that's something we would talk to the dealers about pricing, if you want to get an all-wheel drive.
Yeah, so.
As far as that MSRP.
Yeah, so I my, my Hyundai is rear-wheel drive and in my Chevy is front-wheel drive. And I wanted all-wheel drive, but I couldn't get it. It just, I couldn't get it. And I was prepared to pay, I think it's only $3,000 more for all-wheel drive. The thing is, with all-wheel drive, you also don't get as much range. So like my Hyundai gets 303 mile range, but the exact same car with all-wheel drive, I think, gets 260 or something like that.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, so it's, well, the reason is because there's two motors, one for the front and one for the back.
Okay.
Yeah, so it uses more power, right? So it's just one of the trade-offs, you know, and I said, ah, no big deal.
Right, okay.
We'll see if I complain about it in winter. Anybody else? I know it's overtime, but I'm trying to hang on for anybody up with other questions. Go if you have to.
Yeah, I just had a quick one on the current incentives before January. Are there income caps on that?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thanks.
A lot of people on Facebook are really asking that question. Should I, should I, for example, with the Chevy Bolt, no income, you don't get a tax credit between now and the beginning of the year. But they have great deals in 27,000. So you're not going to get the tax credit though. But in my view, again, I'm opinionated, the car is a lot better than Nissan Leaf, which is about the same price, and you get a tax credit. So it's a trade-off, you know? But, you know, contact me, anybody, if you have any questions about any of this as we go forward. Last, last call for questions. Well, thanks a lot. Take care, everybody.